We'll come, but I think maybe we should continue or move forward. So I'd like to call the audit meeting to get to order. And the first order of business is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on August 18. Do we have a motion to approve? Bruce? In a second?
A second.
Donna, welcome Donna.
You know, I was late because there was traffic.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Well, appreciate everybody coming today. It's 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 kind of a celebration, I'm sure for well, certainly for me and I'm sure for John and Roger Gray that we've been working on this process for the last several months. And I think we've honed it down and we have something that's going to work and help us discharge our mission of the triennial audits. And I think it's also going to produce some important information for us to not only affect future training that we do, but also overall improve the the overall quality of the whole procurement process. So I'm excited about it and hopefully we we have a good start and I'm sure this process will evolve as we move forward and and get into some of the bigger, more complex agencies. But I think we have a good start. We have a path to go and and feeling good about it. What I'd like to accomplish today is I'd like to go through the process very quickly, not in a lot of detail. But go through the process to make sure that you're familiar of how this builds up to the information where we can conclude whether there's compliance or not. And just briefly talk about the engagement letter and John, I don't know if we have these things that we can flash off, but
Yeah, we do. And I could do that as we're going along. I'll do that.
But we want to start with the engagement letter. We also want to talk about the documentation of our work. The engagement letter sends out a notice to the agencies you've been selected and us for starting date when they'll have this information available. It'll indicate the the contracts that we had chosen and request that they pull together all the information so that we can start our audit. The next step in the process is our actual documentation of our work. And we're going to briefly go through the the key components of it. And basically, it's it's a checklist that we have put together of all the compliance requirements as that we were testing for. And it's a along with the questionnaire and any other detail that seems important, certainly we'd want detail of any non-compliance issues. So that we have the backup in our work papers to support any non-compliance finding. And then we have a we'll go back to these, John. I just want to give an overview. Then we have the final report, which is fairly simple, fairly straightforward. It just indicates that, yes, we did the audit. It identifies our findings. If there were no findings and they're in total compliance, that's great. But any finding of non-compliance, we will list. And then the report is issued. We ask for the agency to respond to that report, which can be very beneficial. If there's something we misunderstood or didn't understand during process, we want to make sure that we have all that information available. And we'll leave the the response in the report and then issue the report. The question I think we have to decide and get your input on is what do we do with these reports? I mean, certainly we want to send them out to the to the agencies, which summarizes our findings, but is this something that the board should approve? In other words, we have two of our committee members. It'll be done by the staff. Two of our committee members will will go through the details and read the report and read the non-compliance, go back to the work papers where we developed that finding to ensure that we can support that finding. And then we're in a position that we should be able to issue that report. The question is, in the past, we have asked our board to approve all our reports that we've sent out. We can continue to do that, but we are on kind of a timetable so that a number of things before we finish or start the report and finish it and issue it may conflict with having all these lots of the board for them to approve before it goes. So anyway, I think what we do, what we're most important, these are pretty simple, the reports. And it's strictly based on facts and we're not going and talking about any other issues unless we are compelled to do it. It's just a factual report. And if you believe that we should run these behind the board for their approval, that we approve, run it by the board for their full approval before we issue them. That's something we have to consider. Another thought of that is maybe we could go through the first few and familiarizes the board with what we're doing and the issues that we're raising. And then after they get comfortable in it, let them decide, well, yeah, I don't think we have to we have to read every one of those reports that go up. Anyway, that's that's an issue that comes down the road. Let's get back to our issue of the day, which is going through the various pieces of this audit process.
So if I may, you asked the question about the board. I think the statute is pretty clear that the board shall prepare and issue a compliance report. So it talks about the board doing that. And not in audit committee.
Is that overall compliance report to the
Yes, it says upon completion, it says upon completion of such audit, that's what you've done, right? The board shall prepare and issue a compliance report for the state contracting agency. Right? And then it says what ought to be in that report, just what you described. So the audit, so I think the process is that the audit report gets approved by the audit subcommittee, goes to the full board, right? And then it gets it gets issued.
Okay, that's fine. Versus the report for for all of our work for the year. What this, what we want to do with this is we're going to do all these individual audits, come up with findings of issues of non-compliance. Track that data from every single report through the entire year and then pull together a annual summary of all the issues that were raised. And and perhaps that's the report that we would want to send to the legislator branch, the governor, whoever else is on that list. And that's that's the beauty of this this whole process. And we're going to collect this data from the individual reports, total it up. Not only are we going to hopefully use that in altering further training, but also it's a method that we're going to have to track our progress every year in terms of the number of compliance issues that are raised. Is that going down? Is it going up? I mean, that's that's extremely important as well as the type of issues that are coming up. We're going to track this and that's going to give us great information about the training we need as well as the results. Are we improving this whole process? Are we getting better? And it's a way to measure that, which is which is wonderful. All right. So anyway, that's so that's the conceptual theory of what we're doing. They can comply with that. If that's the law, obviously, we're going to comply with that. The board approving those. Anyway, any other issues before we dive into this a bit? Okay. John, can we start with that, the engagement letter that we send out? But first of all, we for the year, we have identified all the agencies that we're going to do this year. We know the total amount of contracting those agencies do as well as the number of contracts. And I don't know whether we have gone through and identified the samples on all those agencies or we're doing that as we proceed.
Okay, yes. Yeah, we're doing kind of as we proceed. So each quarter we'll go through and we'll, I should show my screen, but we'll develop these procurement audit engagement letters. And at the time when we're doing the procurement audit engagement letter, we go back through the file that we had captured from OPM at fiscal, at the start of the fiscal year. And then we're using that to choose random samples. They're not completely random. I will be very honest with you. I'm trying to collect samples from all different types of purchases at different values. Because I think if you, we went for all the highest values, we would kind of be pigeonholed into a certain type of contract. So what we're trying to do is gather different examples from across the board, some competitive, some non-competitive, some large contracts, some smaller contracts, and some that are really close to some of the thresholds, just to make sure that the the agency is doing what they need to do when they're over a certain threshold because there's certain requirements. For example, competitive, if they reach, if they exceed the $50,000, they have to do something a little bit different. And what I mean by that is they have to they have to get three quotes, but they don't just have to get three quotes. They also have to announce it on the the bid board and they have to do a few other things. So we're just trying to make sure we get the right kind of samples instead of just shotgunning and just picking anything. So we don't, we don't go in there with any idea of like what we want to look at yet. We're just trying to go in there and choose, you know, 10 good ones, I guess. We don't, you know, we don't know Adam, we don't know anything from Adam, right? We're just, we're literally just choosing off a list of contracts. And all we have is contract award type, dollar value, and a couple other data fields to go from. So that's how we've been doing it so far. And then we build these audit engagement letters. I know it's probably hard to see on my screen here, but we build these audit engagement letters. These things are highlighted in yellow because they change every time with a new engagement letter. But this audit engagement letter was something that I believe was similar to what you have used in the past. I'm not positive. I'm sure I am. I'm almost positive that some areas of this letter have expanded because of the way that we're now doing auditing, but this is what we send out. I want to say right now, we're kind of sending this out six weeks in advance of when we want the audits to start because we've seen that for the larger agencies, it takes a long time for them to gather the documentation they need. And and that's just because of, I think they're new to this. We've given them a checklist to help them kind of move their way through it, but as of right now, six weeks kind of seems like the good lead time for us. So so if we can issue these six weeks in advance and then continue working on the the audits that we have already and the data that we have, we just kind of have to keep an eye on where we are on the calendar to make sure that we'll have enough data and information to continue the audit process and we'll just be proactive about releasing these letters. And and I think we released three more, four more of those two weeks ago and we should get the next set of data December 1. And that was for four different agencies. I don't know them off the top of my head.
John?
Oh, go ahead, Bruce.
I've got a couple of questions. First of all, I noticed you've got the memorandum of agreement and memorandum of understanding. Those should only be used internally between agencies.
Correct. That's our understanding of how they're they're used and
So so is the purpose of including those on the survey to ensure that that is indeed how they're using, that how they're being used?
So it's it's, that's a great question. So it actually feeds into the questionnaire. I know you can't see it on my screen. So we send them the questionnaire that was developed previously that everyone had used. And one of those is an MOU and an MOA tab. And on that MOU and MOA tab, we ask questions of how MOUs and MOAs are used. And in here, this is kind of how we're reviewing to make sure that they're not using MOUs. I don't want to say inappropriately, but making sure they kind of are answering the questions the right way on the use of MOUs. And we have not seen, we haven't sampled any MOUs or MOAs, but it's my understanding from OPM that MOUs and MOA should only be between agencies. And they should not be used to procure with outside groups, but that doesn't mean that that's not true because I think you've seen it in the past. So
A sample of 10 MOUs and MOAs. And I saw those with outside parties. The biggest one, as I can remember, was the contract for the lottery, Connecticut Lottery. It was done on an MO, MOA, I got it. It went up. And that was an outside party. It's a huge, there was no contract for that. It was just an MOU. So we don't know what's out there, but but I think I suspect that it's not strictly internal.
No, I think I would agree with you. We just haven't we don't know a great way to find them yet. So I think the easiest way for us is with this questionnaire. And then I think if we start to see a number here, right, in the questionnaire that maybe a group has 10 MOUs, we might want to go back to them and start to sample some of those. And I think the same thing goes for privatization. I know that's a hot topic for Bob too, right? We ask the same types of questions for privatizations and we're getting responses right now that are that are zeros. So so we didn't really push too hard on this one because what we're looking at for Board of Regents is don't quote me, but I want to say it's 10 contracts over the last two years. So it's not a huge sample size. So when they come back and say zero, we feel pretty confident, at least that there's probably not any in here. But when you start to get to the bigger bigger agencies, that's when I think we're going to have to start to test this and MOUs and MOAs a little bit more. And maybe that's how this program grows in the future, right? I'm just not sure how to do it yet because we don't know enough about how this all looks.
This is going to evolve as we can experience in the field and the more complex agencies. So I don't think we have all the answers at this point. We just have enough to proceed. And then whatever we find when we're out there, we're going to deal with. So anyway, that's, go ahead, John. That's, that's great.
So so again, as part of that engagement letter, we sent two.
Bruce, you still have a question?
I do. And it's, and it's a subject that we talked before. Do we look at contracts or do we look at contracts and purchase orders? Do we make that distinction? Because purchase orders would fall under the umbrella many times of a contract. But many times, a large purchase order is placed for the procurement of goods or services without a contract, you know, there's a distinction of semantics, but I'm just wondering if we're going to be capturing that as well.
That's one thing I have to look more into.
Our selections are based on dollars spent. If the state is spending money on it, we want, and it comes in our sample, we're going to pick it up. And whether it's a purchase order or a national contract, it doesn't matter. If we're spending money, it's in our sample. I don't know if that makes sense.
And yeah, and legally, a purchase order is a contract. But a contract isn't necessarily a purchase order. So
Right, we're following the dollars and those dollars are going to be in compliance with what the regulations are.
Okay, so so we're not making that distinction. We're looking at the money spent and that legal document that enables that to happen.
Yes.
I'm trying to bring up that that file that would maybe give us more context, but it's crashing my computer now. It's a large file and that has that giant list of all the different contracts, but I'd have to agree with with Al. I mean, I think this is a list of everything purchased. And we're going back out there and kind of looking at everything. Now, do POs show up on there? I don't know. I'd have to go back to the data file and look at it. I think they do. And but Bruce, you have a really good point because we actually saw this in in a recent example with DESPP, they placed a PO that should have been a PSA. And it it, you know, when they, when they did the PO, they didn't have to do anything competitive, right? Well, they thought they didn't have to do anything competitive. And then it was a contract that was awarded through a purchase order that didn't have the right terms and conditions in it. So there are issues out there. And I think it's important that we test purchase orders and contracts and the whole, everything that we can look at, we want to make sure that they're following the right rules because just because it says purchase order doesn't mean that it was done correctly, as we've seen, at least in one example already.
Okay, so we get the engagement letter and that goes out, we collected data. Now, how are we collecting that data? Is it electronic?
So we've had two agencies provide us data so far and we're waiting on a third. And that should be, well, I'm hoping today, actually. The first one actually sent us hard copies. So they sent us snail mail, hard copies. What we did was we took that and then converted those over to electronic files and saved those. But then the next agencies have made our lives a little bit easier. And what they've started to do was they've set everything that was electronic. And we get the files from the agencies. We get them in a big OneDrive file, which is kind of like an internal shared. Well, it's not an internal cloud, but it's a cloud that they that they've taken all the files and given us permission to go into the folder and take all the files from. The problem is, you'll see here, like, it's 372 megabytes zipped, right? So if we didn't have a shared cloud, we couldn't email this stuff back and forth. We need a file transfer solution. And that's kind of the, some of the issues that we'll run into with some of the board members sharing some of that information because I can't send you 372 megs. I'm going to have to, we're going to have to find a way to either get a file transfer solution or use the state computers if you wanted to access the files. If it's a one-off file, right? If you just wanted a single document, that's easy, right? Most of those are pretty, pretty small, less than 10 megs. But if you wanted to see all the documents they sent us, all 300, 400 pages of it, you'd have to, you'd have to get into the OneDrive file and then go from there. But when they send the OneDrive file over, at least Board of Regents was very, very good at doing it, right? They sent us the questionnaires, they sent us the checklist that are completed, they sent us all the documents that are associated with those, the proposals, they're all labeled, marked very clearly. It was very easy to do this audit. That's why I started with this one. The one that sent us the paper files, it's it's harder because we have to go in there and we have to scan all the documents. And then we have to break the document up into pieces. And each one of those pieces will be different things. The one will be proposals, one will be bid responses, right? We have to almost do all the labeling ourselves, which is a little more complicated. But we're collecting all the files and we're we're storing them in a in a central location. They're all marked based on the sample. So when we choose a contract, they're labeling it by contract and then they're giving us all the documents that are required as part of that checklist. And the checklist, trying not to jump ahead here, but the checklist was here in the beginning with the initial contact letter, we send out a blank checklist for each contract. And what they do is when they're going through this and they're gathering all of their documentation, they're going down through the checklist and Board of Regents supplied it back to us and they've identified everything that they've given us. So when we receive it, we again take a new checklist and go back down through the same thing and make sure that we've got all the documents that they said that they gave to us and we're marking what's here and what's not. So you know, and it changes each time. Competitive contracts will have certain documents, non-competitive contracts will have different documents. It all just depends on what type of contract it is, where it sits with the thresholds, and then how the award goes from there. But really, it, using this checklist helps us really organize everything that we need to do to be able to go through the audit, the audit checks. So the first page is the audit, this checklist that I just explained. And then we start to get into the actual compliance testing. And we used all of those documents that they gave to us to help go through these compliance checks, right? So if the contract here's, we'll just go through the first one. If the contract is greater than $5,000, was the contract based upon at least three written quotes? And we've gone into Connecticut Source ourselves. And we've looked that they did release the solicitation and we've looked up that solicitation number and then we're able to pull a report, well, actually, the agency had to give us the report. And the the report actually showed us how many bidders submitted through the electronic system for that solicitation. So we have that documentation. We mark here, we mark pass, we could always have like a yes or no. I just chose pass for now and said that they met the requirement for this number one compliance check, right? And then then we just go down through this list, really, you know, there's, there's, I want to say 10 or 11 different compliance checks in here. And again, we use that documentation that they gave us or we use other resources like the Connecticut Source Portal. Or at one point, I think we even use Core to go look at some some financial data. But we use that and we try to capture that and and mark where you can find that information. So this isn't a great example. Okay, here's one on on the compliance check five, right? It was you must have certain criteria used to evaluate proposals. What we did was when we went in there in the notes, we said on page two of the RFP, it identifies the four bid criteria that were used for the selection approach, experience, track, record, and cost. This way, if someone ever came back to say, well, why'd you mark this as a pass? We can then go back to say, well, on page two of the RFP, it should have this in here. So we're trying to collect those notes too, to make it easier for the board member reviewers. So if they want to do the same thing, if they want to check kind of what we're checking and look, it's easier for them instead of having to go through the entire RFP package and try to find where the big criteria are. I know that was long, I know that was long-winded, but
John?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just on the the point about file sharing, I believe all board members have a ct.gov email that they can access. And we've been using OneDrive or shared drives previously in the past, so that that might be a path forward. And I know also Microsoft Teams has the ability to to load files into it. And I don't know if that connects to OneDrive or not, but we do have that capacity if folks want to use either Teams or the ct.gov emails to to access the OneDrive.
Well, we do have that that ability. However, I've had as long as we can have an IT person standing by because I've had a lot of difficulty logging in the .gov website. You know, they 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 send you verification code on your cell phone. But for some reason, I've had a lot of difficulty. I know a couple of other folks have as well. In fact, I know a couple of people who turned in their tablets because they were so frustrated.
We might have to do like Lauren said and use a OneDrive solution instead of the S drive because S drive makes you a VPN in and Greg and I will vouch for this. Half the time it crashes out everything else on your computer. Half the time you can't use other apps when you're trying to access files when your VPN is open. So maybe the maybe what we'll have to do, figure out a different cloud-based solution for you. And I don't know if you'll have to use your Connecticut Gov for that or not. We'll, we'll have to figure it out, I guess, is where I'm going with that. And we hope to do that when when the auditor gets here or before then, if we could figure it out. If it's a simple OneDrive thing, I'm just I don't know how we share outside an organization because even when Board of Regents tried to share with me, they had to, I had to go, they had to make a link for me into their system to get their files. And then I had to bring them back over to our system, put them into our files, and then maybe we can make our files accessible to your team, I to this team. And that could either be through a Connecticut login or it might be able to do personal. I just, I don't know enough about it yet. We'll have to figure that out.
Yeah. Have you been able to to store documents in Microsoft Teams? I mean, we're all using that right now to have this meeting. So would that be a possibility if we're not using a OneDrive but to use the documents and files function on Microsoft Team? Or do you not think that it has enough capacity?
I truthfully, I don't know. I haven't figured it out yet, but that sounds like a great solution if we could just do it right in Teams. The only problem is we have problems when people come in as guests or if they come in as non-guest, right? Because we ran into that for in the past with some meetings. That's probably our only issue. We'll figure it out, though. There's, there's has to be a solution that we probably already have. And if not, we can get a file transfer solution. If worse comes to worse, that probably only costs us $50 a month or whatever, it would be maybe 100.
Bob, you had a question?
Yeah, yes. This may seem kind of stupid, but this contract that we evaluated This may seem kind of stupid, but uh, this contract that we evaluated and issued a report on, I don't know what, what it was for. All, all, all I got is, is, is a, is a number.
Right.
So, so. So is, is it, you know, is it for hookers? Is it for, you know, I mean, what, what could it possibly be for, you know? It would, would be helpful to, to know that and it could be male and female hookers, right? There could be a different code for that. So I, 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 I think that's important to know what we actually were auditing. And then it would be helpful on, on the issue of privatization. Let's say this contract was for janitorial services. We would say, I think state employees do janitorial services. I think state employees do this. I think state employees do that. I mean, some of us have, have more expertise in, in knowing what has been done by state employees and not being done by state employees. Um, and I think that it, once the report is issued, you know, I think it's important, right? I, I mean, we see it here, right? I mean, so, but when we, when we go to issue this report, right? It seems a little shallow to me. That, because the public may want to read the report, may want to read why we gave somebody um, you know, a recommendation for improvement. Um, and then, and then I just want to make this last comment, I don't know where it would fit out. To the extent that, for example, I know that, that Greg and um, John weren't there, but when we did the State Department of Education, it was so egregious that we were looking to um, take from them their contracting authority, right? We had started a forty-seven process with them and then they, they, they were resistant to begin with. And then they finally decided to uh, get on board. So when, so we're, we're slightly different in that, and, and, and I'm very interested in your reaction to this, Al, is this is an audit report, the auditors who issue the report are only making recommendations, right? And whether they follow those recommendations or not, that's really up to that agency. With us, right, when there was a, a proposal to move us to the legislature, we said no, because we actually have some, what we call remedial authority to fix things, right? And, and so um, I, I just, I don't know where, where that would fit in, in terms of an auditor saying uh, what we saw in this contract is so egregious that we're gonna, we're gonna use our authority to terminate that contract.
I think that will become evident. As we go into a, an agency and select ten contracts and eight of those have several issues of non-compliance, that would be a signal to me that, hey, something has to happen, we gotta do something with this one. Whereas if we're in a, another agency with ten contracts and you might find one or two, you know, looks like clerical, uh, you know, errors. Uh, I think we judge that differently. But I think the data as we have it, we're, we're here to, to find non-compliance or compliance or non-compliance. And the number of instances of non-compliance uh, will tell us if this is an unusual problem in an agency. And I think we just have to see what, what the, what the data tells us as we go.
So you, what you're saying is that it, it, we're, we're not going to make that determination in the audit that goes to the board?
I think if we go to an agency and we're finding multiple non-compliance issues, then we're going to bring that to the attention of the audit group and based on its severity, go to the board.
Well, I, 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 I just want to disagree with you for a second here, Al, and I, I hate to disagree with you.
I don't like disagreeers.
Yeah, right. No, when you say multiple, right? I mean, there could be one, like egregious contract. I mean, we had a multi, it was, it was probably over a hundred million dollars, Bruce and I were sitting on this, where they kind of violated every possible rule on, on a forty thirty-six case that came to us, right? This was the uh, health insurance for retired state employees, right? Except that they, it didn't fit into forty thirty-six, but did they violate every other possible uh, rule that, that was out there? Yes. Could we stop it? Well, no, because we, we couldn't turn the ship around uh, relative to, to that contract. It wa- it was things like, you know, the weights were decided afterwards. They, they were enrolling people in a contract in which they didn't have a signed contract. They said the contract could be retroactive, right? I mean, all really egregious stuff, but it was just in the one contract, right? And, and when we look at the teachers' retirement board, they probably only had three, four contracts, right? They have one for actuaries, one to do their uh, that. So I, I, I just, I'm just putting that out there in terms of, you know, if in fact we, we stumbled, we stumbled across that particular um, point.
I think our selection of contracts, following the dollars, is going to identify whether they're in compliance or not, or whether they have a problem complying or not. If there's one contract and, and they're a sample and we see that, I mean, that, that's going to, that's a red flag that we'll, we've got to, this is different, we're, you know, we've got to treat this um, separately. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know how to respond. We, we've got to do twenty agencies and, and get an understanding, are, are they complying or are they not? I think our approach to this is go in not knowing anything about that agency, but looking at the details of those contracts, checking off whether they comply or not, is going to tell us where the problems are and put us in a position to resolve that. And that's resolving it, if it's, if it's egregious, all the contracts and none, nothing's in compliance. I mean, obviously we, we've got to stop that agency at that point, I mean, of spending any more dollars. I don't, I don't know what else we could do at the start of a process to uh, anticipate all possible things. I think our approach is going to identify issues and we may change our approach as we go to get better at it, to learn from it. But this approach is going to work and it's going to identify where the problems are. And then we're going to have data to, to support it, so. We've got to give it a shot. We've got to give it a chance. We're going to go.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I'm not saying that this prob- I'm just saying when, when we bump into something, right? Where, where is, you know, the off-ramp for the board to, to take action? That, that's really my, my, my question, not, not a uh, because, because it, it, we all know that through sampling, right? You know, you, you could, you could miss a, a bunch of bad contracts, right? In terms of sampling, it's, and we end up sampling just the contracts that they complied with. You know, it's funny, the one that you did here, um, which is the Charter Oak State College. They had, you know, in one, they had people sign the affidavits, right? Or, and then in another, in another RFP, they didn't sign the affidavits. You know, it makes you wonder what they did with the other four contracts that they did, but um, yes.
I think um, we've got to rely on uh, our auditor and John, who's in the detail going through and they'll get a good sense of when there, when there's frequency of non-compliance, we've have a problem and, and that just raises a flag to, to John or raises a flag to, to Greg and, and it comes up to the committee and the board, so. And your approach that uh, sampling, where we catch the good, all the passes and we'll miss the uh, I don't believe in that. I, I believe our, our sampling and our knowledge random selection. Knowledge means that there are different kinds of contracts who want to make sure that we include some of the outliers and, and there's. I think it's good and it's the best I think we can do initially to go in and determine whether we, whether the human operations are, are operating effectively. I don't know if that makes any sense, but, but. This approach is going to work. Any other thoughts or questions? Should we move on?
Hey, I just, I can make one comment because, because it's highlighted on the screen in front of us. We're do- what we're doing, yeah, this, this uh, thi- this.
This was DEP, right?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is weird. I mean, it's a pond dam repair project, right? I mean, it's all whatever the dates is and if I read that right, it's not competitive for a four million dollar project?
That's why it's chosen, right? I mean, there's other ones, yeah.
If, if you were in DOT, they would be taking you out in handcuffs if, if you tried to do something like that. I mean, they used to take out people in handcuffs who tried to do that.
Yeah, I mean, you'll see them all over. Um, unfortunately, the non-competitive, like the other two that I have highlighted here, they're both about two and a half million each and they were both non-competitive too, right? So I'm, when we try to highlight them, we, we came up with a methodology on how many we would choose. So it's based on, these guys have about fifty contracts, so I want to say we're doing about ten percent. So we went back and chose five and I, I tried to find those ones that just didn't look right. But it's, we don't have much to go off of. You're right, Bob. Like if there was more information here in the description, you'd have a better idea of trying to go in and figure out, oh, this might be privatization, maybe I should choose this one. But when you get it and it just says no, no power station, right? It's, it's kind of just a guess. So I'm trying to use dollar value and then this column of what type of contract type it was and those things to go through and try to choose pretty good samples. But you know, I, I think you had some really good points about like, what do we do when we run into an issue? And I think it won't be long um, before you're going to have to probably figure that out. And I want to say maybe, you know, our third or fourth audit might be a little bit more challenging based on what we're kind of seeing now. So I, really we're deferring to the board. I, you know, does the board want to put more things in the report? Do they want to deal with that separately, um, you know, after the report is issued? I don't know. So um, you know, we're, we're here to support whatever way you guys want to go.
We want to report all our findings. We, it's in the contract, it's non-competitive and the, clearly not in compliance. That's going to be a finding in our report. And if we, we have several contracts like that, that's a, that's an issue. The board's got to do something about that and it's a serious problem, so. But we got to go get the information, we're gonna, we're gonna get the facts that we can build our case and, and do what is right for the state.
Yeah, this, yeah, you're right. I mean, th- this one wasn't easy, Board of, Board of Regents. This is all we had to go off of, right? We had six contracts or whatever it was. So it was a harder sample, but you'll see in some of the other ones, we've got a lot more samples. And to, to Al's point, if you see the same issue come up across ten samples, you know it's an issue, right? If it's always step three, which was, I forget what step three is now in terms of where we are in the compliance checklist. But if you see ten of these and they have issues with waivers, um, then, then you know that it's a systemic issue and that needs to get addressed. That's at least how we can measure it. I think that the board has to figure out what actions we then take to try to get it corrected. Do we force them to do a corrective action plan? Do we um, take away their authority to contract? I, I don't know. I thi- I think I'd have to defer to your group because you've, you've been through this a lot longer than I have.
No, but that's certainly the board's responsibility. I think we can identify the issues. Make sure it's factual, bring it to the board to determine what's, what's the solution. What do we do? What's the, what's the action?
Yeah, that makes sense.
John, can we go, move on?
Okay, you got it, you got it. So we're, so I won't bore you and make everybody go through all of these check sheets. But the check sheets, again, we go through step by step, piece by piece, document through document. Try to find what document we could use that substantiates pass or fail of a certain requirement. And then what we try to do is then go into the report. Sorry, I'm jumping all around here. This has to go in the auditor files. So then the auditor will start to draft the report. And the report, what we're trying to do then is to put a summary of the non-compliances together. This one, again, it's one sample and one finding, so it's, it's not great. Well, we might have to come up with a matrix or a way to start laying out how many issues there were by contract. We'll have to figure that out once we get to bigger reports. How can we look at a summary of all the findings? Try to look for systemic issues and then highlight those um, easily. So people that re- read the report can understand where that's, where the agency, I guess, is struggling or the non-compliances are mostly. So um, we'll have to work our way through that, but I think we can come up with a pretty simple table that should be able to do that. We just, we didn't really need to do it for this report.
On this report, ca- can we go to the agency's response for a second?
Sure.
Um, please be advised that Turo does not have the conflict of interest forms or it, I, I, I don't know what that means. I know that's their response, but I don't know what it means.
Word for word, I didn't, I didn't change a thing, I swear, because I wanted to put exactly what they said in there, right?
We don't know what something doesn't mean or are we, are we following back up with them? Right? Please be advised does not have uh, the conflict of interest forms. I mean, did they lose them or they didn't have them? They didn't, they didn't order them from central supply? I mean, what, what's that help?
Basically, they don't have them, so they figured they didn't have to comply with that. I mean, and the obvious answer is however you do it, whether it's on a form or whatever, you have to comply with the, the requirement, so. I don't know, you're going to get all sorts of.
So you read, so you read that as being they don't have the forms?
Yeah.
As opposed to not having those forms for that particular solicitation?
I think they're referring to this particular. Yeah, to that solicitation, I believe that they were referring to that, but they didn't say it specifically.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just think that, I just think when we put some, something out, uh, when we put something out, we, we, we should be pretty clear amongst ourselves what, 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 what it means. Because I, I don't know what it means.
I took that to mean the vendor had the forms and they're not doing it on any contract, right?
Yeah, it's not a requirement that they recognize. And that's why we're clear.
That's a different.
So that's, that's a non-compliant.
Yeah.
So. I don't think we can necessarily, um, the agency's response is the agency's response. So we can't go back or change it or ask them to change. I mean, that's their response. To me, that's, they're not in compliant and they're taking no responsibility for that. I don't have the form, so I can't, I can't comply.
Let, let, let me go back to my, my earlier comment. So if what they're saying to us is that they, they, they plan not to comply with the conflict of interest forms? If that's what they're saying to us?
I would think.
Ain't, ain't that a problem? You know, awful with their contracting?
In our discussions with them, as you gave the report, is you're, you're not in compliance with the regulations. Whatever you have to do, you, you got to get it done. I mean, you're going to do it, whether it's a form or how other else you comply, it's a non-compliance, you're going to comply.
So can I ask this question?
Right, sure.
Sure, so in this case where they didn't have the um, the confidentiality and the uh, non-conflict forms, is it something that we would have them do retroactively? I mean, they've already gone through the process and placed the contract or is it something that proactively? I mean, they've already gone through the process and placed the contract, or is it something that proactively we want them to ensure they're doing moving forward? And maybe that's, that's the note or the comment or the dialogue we have with them is, okay, you messed up this time. But here are the forms. Now you can't say you don't have them and you have to use them moving forward.
Well, another issue might be, one question is, why don't you have them? And it could be that they have a. Uh, they have guidelines that they use internally. That may not include all the requirements that, that's required by statute. So.
Right.
You know, we ask the question, why? And if the answer is, well, that's not in our manual. Uh, then it's, you know, it's, it's a pretty, uh, easy recommendation to put together, modify your manual, so.
Right, right.
I just think that we're going to get. A number of non-compliance issues. And to me, non-compliance is non-compliance. Then I don't have to. Educate or, or go back to that kind and say, hey, you're not in compliance. I recommend you get in compliance. I mean, you're non-compliant, that's.
Wouldn't it make sense though to ask them why?
Well, sure. I would think, I would think that would be part of our discussion with them.
Yeah.
Is why, but also you gotta get in compliance. That's wrong.
Well, well, that's right. But, but the question then is, well, well, how? How do you get in compliance? And if it's something as easy as fixing their internal manuals? Uh, or if it says Lauren said they don't have the forms, they didn't know they existed. But that, that, I think that should be part of the process. You know, if we get an answer, we should delve in and. As when we get our, our new accounts person on board, that would be. I think a, and, and interesting and, and important step to, you know, if they're out of compliance, yeah, that's right, but. Why are you out of compliance? Because our recommendation would include a solution based on why they're not in compliance.
Right. If, if we're going to, if we're here to help people get into compliance, understanding the deficit. Is absolutely necessary. And it could be. Opening a larger dialogue about any other issues that we didn't catch with this particular audit. That we could be proactive about in helping them fix before it becomes a deficiency.
Okay, I just, I just have a sense that if you're not in compliance, the recommendation that, uh, they, uh. You do whatever you have to do to get in compliance is obvious, but. And to. If you get, and we're getting, and we've got twenty or thirty non-compliance issues. And we write, well, I think you ought to get in compliance, you ought to get in compliance, you ought to do this, but, but. I don't, I'm not sure that's, we have to tell them how to do it. To how to comply. And it's, that's.
And how, how, how are they gonna comply if we don't tell them how?
Yeah, they may not know how, but they.
It's their responsibility to know, right?
Well, I know that.
Our responsibility to educate. We have the onus of training. Right? That is our responsibility as a board. It's not just wagging our finger. It is also. Helping facilitate compliance. Nobody is trying to do the wrong thing. So we're here to help them do the right thing.
And, and, and don't forget, a lot of these agencies don't have procurement professionals. They have folks that are doing other things and procurement isn't a, a high priority. So when we say fix it, they genuinely may not know how. I mean, we.
And I think it goes. Sorry, sorry, Bruce.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think it goes a long way in building positive relationships when we don't just come in and say, you're doing it wrong. But we say, this is what we're looking for and this is why, and this is how you come back into compliance. I mean, this is still a very new process for a lot of these agencies. Um, and a lot of them are still, first of all, having issues with, with staffing, on-the-job training. I, I, I think it's very important for us to help be those, those facilitators and, and getting compliance. Because again, I don't think anybody's trying to do it wrong. It's just they don't know what is right. And that's, that's our responsibility as a board to help them.
Then we can put in a recommendation to reach finding.
I don't know. I think we should ask them why, like Bruce says. I mean, why?
All right, no question. That would be a normal part of the, uh, the process and, and dealing and wrapping this up is, why wouldn't you do that? And they said, I don't have the form, we didn't get the form, blah, blah, blah. Um, but, okay, all right. We have one. Accounting examiner. To do these, uh, these audits. And. To. Just try to make it as simple as process, as processes possible. Um, to get all these audits done and the coverage. That's a lot of, lot of work. That's a lot of detail. It's a lot of information. Uh, I guess we could, we could give a recommendation on each finding as to how to resolve it. But that takes time. That takes, uh. You gotta verify that and make sure that it's the right, right kind of advice. So, I mean, it's doable. I think it's, uh, gonna bog the process down.
Well, you know, the, the next time you perform an audit on that agency, you may get the same finding. And when asked why, you know, we identified this last time, they say, well, we really had no idea how to fix it.
Yeah, but I think the difference, we have, we have means to, uh. With teeth that the auditors don't have. If you go in and they disregarded our findings. And we're still let us see it's continuing problem. It seems to me then they become a. Agency that we've got to consider harsher. Treatment. I don't know. I'm not sure what that is.
How? Right? Like, i- if we don't provide them that recommendation, we don't tell them how. I mean, is it really fair for us to move forward with, with the teeth? I, I don't disagree, right? If we find multiple times over the same non-compliances with the same agency, even after we told them how to correct it. Then you move forward and, and, you know, use the teeth as it were. But on the first, the first pass, and it's just a matter of education and, and assistance, and then they still don't correct. That's different than if we don't give them any education and assistance to begin with, right? We're trying to solve root causes as opposed to just.
Sure, I understand. Yeah, yeah.
And, and remember, you have this nice little subcommittee to help with a lot of that work to not bog down our single, uh, you know, account examiner. Happy, happy to step up and step in.
And I think too, like the chief procurement officer should be able to help, you know, guide them on what to fix and how to fix it, right? We should be able to see across all the agencies and see what works and certain, certain groups and share best practices and those things. It's difficult in this one because John's the auditor, but like if I wasn't the auditor, I think I could play more of a role to help them. Get things corrected. That way the auditor can still kind of write the report and document what they need to do. But maybe I could play more of a liaison role and try to help them get things corrected. And I don't know if that's a formal process or an informal process. You know, I defer to the, the board on what direction they want us to go, but I think. I should at least offer that, right? Like, I, I'm more than willing and I think that that's where we could create a lot of value is if we help these agencies. Um, correct their issues.
So, so if, if I make, uh, just. This was a very helpful conversation. I think that some of it, when we looked at the Connecticut Court Authority. Uh, the corruption there was purposeful. There, there was an intent to be corrupt. Um, and then other places that we look, right? It was like this, like, oh yeah, we did, we're supposed to do an affidavit. Oh, okay. Wh- where are those forms, right? You know, I, I think there's really kind of two roads that, that, that this leads down. And I think that this discussion has been helpful, um, about that, because we have seen the corrupt road. And it's, it's littered with money and people, you know? And this is just, as Bruce described, people just not knowing and, and Lauren describing not being educated about what needs. To happen, particularly even though we call this the border regions, this is a small, tiny agency, this Charter Oak. If, if they have a, a couple of dozen employees, that would be a lot, right? Um, so. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, so we'll have recommendations on every finding. And try it, see how it works.
I mean, and I'm sure a lot of findings will be very simple. Not, not needing a ton of, of work to go forward with them. But, um, it's, it's hard to, to just wag a finger and not offer a solution. I think that builds a lot of resentment.
But, but I think you're right, Al. I think there are gonna be findings where they just didn't do something and what we should do is say, do it.
Do it.
Yeah, but there are gonna be others where there is a genuine explanation for why it wasn't done. And we can discern that, I think, easy enough.
Yeah, in the next audit, you're gonna see that in twenty twenty-one, some of the files that we selected, they just don't have the documentation. The gentleman saying, you know, I, I can't give you this because no one was in the office and we didn't capture these, this, right? It was for, it was for basically a tractor trailer with a refrigerator in it for bodies for the corners. I mean, and they just. They just went out and had to get what they had to get, and they don't have a lot of the documentation. So that'll be a lot of struggles. We're gonna have a lot of findings on that one. Um, and I don't think it's because they didn't know what to do. I think. You know, time and circumstance just drove them to do whatever they needed to do to get the job done at the time. Unfortunately, they don't have any of that stuff now. Which is not gonna look great in the report.
But they spent state monies.
Yeah, they did. You're right.
They didn't follow the rules, so.
And it should get documented as a finding, right? I'm not saying it shouldn't. I, I just. Again, it was just an example of what I think we're gonna start to hear as excuses or what might come up at some of these things.
Anyway, that's, that makes a good point. Let's, I mean, we want to be helpful. So in those cases, it's probably appropriate to have, uh, recommendations and. And, um, as part of the process. And see how it goes, right?
Okay.
All right, John, where are we in this, this process?
Oh, I know, I've been all over the place here, but, um, so I'll go back to the report. We put a summary of the finding in here, and again, this will get better as we move things along. And then we got the agency's response. I did not go back to them and ask, you know, why, why don't you have this? It wasn't. You know, this was, this was all via email. I haven't even sent them a draft copy of this report yet. I wanted to talk to everybody first before we start to send drafts out, but. You know, ma- maybe there's more dialogue there, but then, you know, after all those findings and the agency responses, we're kind of just. You know, we end, we end the report with, you know, this is the data, these are the non, non-compliances. You know, the goal and what I really haven't spent a lot of time thinking about, but I was thinking about it this morning is. How do we then start to take this information and start rolling it up to a bigger report where we can kind of make a report? You know, at a higher level and say, based on our last twelve reports or fifteen or twenty reports. These are the areas where we have the most issues, right? I think to Al's point, that's, that's really what this is all about, is to gather that document, the, the data at the contract level. Roll it up through the reports and then send it to a summary report. And I think that summary report is really more of a recommendation to the legislator and the. Governor's office and everybody else to say, if this is where we see weaknesses in the process, or at least this is the areas where people aren't compliant. We need your help and assistance trying to get them to comply or, you know, maybe changes or. To processes or procedures or statutes are required to get these things fixed. But again, we'll have these. These will be the agency level reports, and I think there will be a sum, there'll need to be a summary report where all this flows into. And I think that was on Al's, Al's notes that I stole after we had our meeting last week.
As I saw, um, John, we'll, we'll have to set up a data, um. Input sheet where all the compliance issues are down. We have the agencies across the top. And then every non-compliance will just identify, I mean, uh, indicate. So that this can be the, uh. The data which will, we can summarize either by, by month, by quarter, by year. Of the, the findings that we had all year, the severity of those findings and. And hopefully be the basis of a, a summary report that, uh. Cannot only, um. Focus our attention on, I mean, what needs for our training needs overall. But also report to the legislator of, of the status of procurement. And again, year after year, we hope to see that that. We're measuring ourselves that it improves over a year, so. It's, but it's a data collection of, uh. The instances of non-compliance. Not the recommendation is going along, but. Just the amount of non-compliant, uh, that we noted. And then the report is, that's it. It's, uh, issued by the state contractor standing board and the date.
Yeah, and I don't know if we put this date as when it, it sounds like we're gonna have a vote at the board meetings, right? Where we would approve these and then we would put that as the date and then that would kind of be the final report that goes out.
Right.
And that, that pretty much wraps it up for where we are so far. We'll, we'll talk about that summary. Worksheet and how we develop that and how we use that to make a, a larger report. I think we'll have to kind of see how some of these come together. We have two reports, I mean, two, two audits that are pending. One can probably start next week, which is, um. Chief Medical Examiner's Office. There was two for that as well. It's not an overly burdensome report, but there is a lot of missing documentation. And the next one is D S P P, which is, which is a larger audit. So once we get this process locked down, we can start to move forward a little bit more with, with some of this stuff, but that's where we are so far.
Great. And can, can I just ask a quick question now? And when we, when we issue our report, I, I assume we're cutting the public auditors in on this as well?
Yeah, that seems to make sense. Um, we probably should have a distribution. List for all the reports, the agency as well as. Others that may be interested. I don't know, O P M, D A S, would they be interested?
I think O P M would be. I'm not sure about D A S, but I think O P M would be one of the, the A P A.
But we should, uh, as we issue them, we should send them all to a distribution list.
Yeah, I would think that we would probably figure out the, you know. Who in the General Assembly would also be interested in seeing that? Right? Whether it's the approach or the committee that has cogits over that particular agency.
Yeah, yeah. Good point. John, what I was gonna say.
You, you gave me one, Al. You gave me one in the meeting. I, I, I am so satisfied at this point.
I, I slipped you positive stuff all over. You just don't pick it up. We have that whole list of all the industries we're doing this year, and we also assigned, uh. Audit committee members to be the, uh, the two, uh, reviewing each of these. So as we send out. The engagement letter, uh, should maybe that, a copy of that be sent to the two audit committee members? Who are, um, going to be reviewing it?
Yeah, this is, I, I tried to bring up this, the sheet that we had marked up of who's going to be reviewing each one, but yes, we can, we could definitely send this out.
Oh, Bruce has got a layup here, right? I was wondering that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your reference on this. Appreciate it. So, uh, at least the, when the engagement letter goes out, and I don't know if we've got some sort of, uh. Well, I guess when we do perform the audit, uh, we ought to be in touch with the, uh, the members also.
Right. I should say in touch with Bruce and Donna as we go along, right?
Maybe to talk about issues that come up during the audit as well as, uh, set timing for the, the review of that. Um, I'd like to keep the committee members, um, you know, close to. What's going on and involved with the decisions on recommendations and. what's going on and involved with the decisions on recommendations and, and other, uh, other parts of the process, problems that come up. Does that make sense?
Yeah, done.
Okay, great. What else? What else? We got anything else on the agenda?
Just one question. Greg, how we doing on filling that auditor's position?
Yeah. Good question.
Uh, it looks like we are all good. I just talked to Brittany again today. Every day I've been talking to her and it looks like she's just waiting for a start date. The, uh, candidate, she sent her everything. She, I thought we were secure. She's telling me now that, um, she hasn't responded to her regarding her start date. So we're just trying to secure a start date. So I talked to her nine this morning. Yeah, so, um, that's all I'm trying. So it seems like it's like snail's pace, but, um.
Oh, it is snail's pace.
It is, it is.
Like, it seems like it is. Right. It, 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 it is, it is a little bit frustrating, but so I, all I keep doing is every morning like clockwork. Hey, like, but I mean, it's, it just has to be a routine of mine. And until she, she gets to, you know, over the finish line, so.
But it does sound like the person that we had chosen for that, the person that had audited in New York choo- took the position, right? She has accepted it.
That's what it sounds like.
That was good news for us because I, I mean, she was experienced, which I think will really help us get off the ground.
She's great. She was great, yeah. Yeah. So I, I'm just hopeful. Gotta, right now it's just, I don't wanna jinx anything. It feels like with D A S, you know, you get what you get. So.
So, let me just, speaking of staff, let me move to a different topic. Do we know where Jane Morningstar is and whether we hear from her?
She marked tentative for this meeting and that was the day after I sent the meeting invite last week. I haven't heard from her since.
Yeah, I thought she might be ill. Yeah.
I've not heard from Danny on this one, no.
Yeah.
Or Tom.
I have not heard from Tom in months.
Okay.
Done.
Yeah, because they're gonna be coming up, right? And then, you know, they didn't go through the discussion that we went through today, which I think was very helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're, we're more than happy to walk people through the reports or set up these types of working meetings or whatever needs to happen. But you're right, there was some really good discussion today and some of these same things have come up between Greg and Conversation and I. And then I remember having that same exact conversation that all of you had with Paul over lunch one day and it lasted about two hours of should we be making, be making recommendations or not? So, um, it's, this was, this was helpful at least for me. So thank you.
Okay. We have a, uh, motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Bob in a second? Donna, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Take care, guys. Happy Veterans Day.
Have a, have a great weekend.
You too.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone.